Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's on our.
Oh, I didn't look, I didn't look.
Are we doing that at this minute? Okay.
Little.
Good morning, good morning, everyone. I'll call meeting doors for Stanford pledge, please.
Just hands. Foundation under God. And this law, but a regime of justice for all.
Let's see, Jason, your turn to open us up today.
Let's get rolling.
Okay, we'll move on. Vicki could, uh, give it a roll call, please.
Missionary Hallway.
Here.
Missionary. Ben Alstine.
Here.
Mission Stola.
Here.
Missionary. Moving.
Present.
Missionary.
Here. Thank you, Vicki. Before we get to public comment, I do want to mention that today is the National Day of Prayer. Uh, historically, we have taken a break, um, before that event. Um, so we will be taking a break today at about eleven forty-five. It's my understanding that it has been moved indoors across the street to the Wesleyan Church as opposed to typically been outside in front of the courthouse. So we'll break at eleven forty-five, um, for that. We'll get as far as we possibly can through our agenda before then. Public comment, uh, again, we look at three minutes, please. Uh, if you need all three minutes, you'll hear a chime and I'll thank you at that point. But, uh, anyone like to make public comment? Yeah, Dan.
So good morning. My name is Dale Lechenberg. I live in Helena Township. Thank you, Bill and Jeremy, for this chance to interface on the ad hoc committee. Uh, when we started a community involvement toward managing the new facility cost, I knew less of the complete project intentions, which I now understand much better. We are, we were concerned over facility cost, but however, I would not want to shortchange what we can, what can be done in benefit of our community. It has been clear how important it is to manage those individuals coming into the jail intake, offering options to incarceration by providing a facility that is conducive for promoting and rewarding good behavior, treatment instead of punishment. I see better today the value of a stepping up program, which has been intended as integral to the new facility. When interfacing with the ad hoc committee, we would like to consider a low security facility with two maximum security cells if ever needed. Minimum security jails are less costly to build, less costly to maintain. And with a program that provides treatment funded significantly by the state, all of this can help save taxpayer dollars over time. In closing, we are coming with community safety in mind while offering individuals a path toward improving. I look forward to working with the seven others advocating for a facility that will reflect our community needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. What else?
Well, I'm Ross Maxwell with the Six Mile Lake Association and a few of us here work supporting the, uh, Point Drone Commission Resolution to address.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Trina Gerardin. I'm the thirteenth Circuit for Administrator Grantham County. I just wanted to come and say thank you. Um, we had a slew of big projects over the past six months. I just wanted to update you about them. The first one was we got a new polycom installed on our wall that was provided for free, uh, by the state. That took one day and I wanted to say thanks to Val and Dylan and IT for working with them as much as there was that day. Um, the second one was the new court recording equipment through JAVs. You guys approved that last year. Um, that was a five day project. It was pretty in-depth and thanks to Mitch and facilities for being kind of on call as those, um, you know, a few pickups arose that week. And then we just finished our courtroom furniture in the circuit court. That project took a little longer than we had expected. It was supposed to be done by the end of twenty twenty-four. It just got done about two weeks ago. It was about a six month project. So I offer any of you to walk in the circuit courtroom, see all these updates. It looks really great. Thanks for supporting the circuit court, um, and continuing our working relationship. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. There it comes. I'm at Keller's loss. Um, I am here just to give an update on the fact that we started the instruction Friday, right? Last Friday. And, uh, we're moving forward, uh, after a very, very rigorous, robust process with the state of Michigan. But we've come to a really, really cool, um, project and something that's duplicatable for other developers across the state that want to bring affordable housing to their community. So we feel, uh, really excited and, and, uh, appreciate your support in getting us this far. We will be done, uh, fully complete before the asphalt companies close in November. So we're on a really, really tight schedule, but we have it all right in front of us and you're going to see a lot of activity over there going forward this summer. So just want to thank you for your support and give an update.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm Fred Gasper. I have been working with Leslie on the dam rehab stuff in Bel Air. And my background is I, I was a design engineer. I did a lot of hydraulic modeling, dam design in my career with USDA NRCS. And, uh, I support us taking a look at the whole chain and getting some navigation, taking care of between, especially between, uh, Hanley and Benway Lakes. I do live on Benway Lake, by the way. And by the way, both of us. And, uh, and then out toward the Calvert and Ellsworth, there's also a lot of, of sentimentation and the flooding issues we have up there are are, I need, really need to be addressed. I don't want to add to saying. But I've been helping her. That's been, it's been a joy working with Leslie voluntarily.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Hi, Richard Frisky from Banks Township. I'm again, uh, here on behalf of the Antrim Citizens for Common Sense. We're all stakeholders in the future of the Public Safety Center here in Antrim County. This Public Safety Center isn't just a financial investment. It's a long-term commitment to the safety, well-being, and trust of our entire community. It's critical we align our resources with the. It's critical we align our resources with the real needs of our citizens. Transparency, fiscal responsibility, community involvement must go hand in hand. We fully support the vision of a public safety center that meets the needs of inmates, law enforcement, the judiciary, and staff. Facility that promotes rehabilitation, public safety, and operational excellence. We stand ready to walk alongside this process, not just as supporters, but as partners committed to seeing this project through. We advocate for a timely, yet prudent approach, utilizing the expertise of individuals inside and outside of our county to ensure the facility serves to both today's needs and tomorrow's challenges. The recent village results and petition signatures send a clear message. Citizens really would like to see a plan that reflects their values for moving forward. I'm pleased to serve on the proposed ad hoc committee in pursuit of such a plan. Antrim County deserves a win. This is the largest project the county has ever undertaken. It must be built on a foundation of trust, transparency, and broad community support. We hope, we hope to help achieve that. Our team brings deep community roots and a steadfast commitment to helping this board succeed. Not for personal credit, but for the county that we love. We offer an unwavering focus on what's best for Antrim County. Imagine the message it will send when voters see that their voices are being heard, that this board paused, listened, and partnered with citizens to deliver the best-in-class model for rural public safety, one that others will look to best example. Let's do this right. Let's do it together. Let's do it for Antrim County.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sherry Hogan, Echo Township, because I was all lonely. The last county commissioner meeting I attended. I looked at what the equalization director presented, and taxes have gone up fifty-five percent over the last three years. I added up the twenty-two, the twenty-two, and the almost thirteen percent in taxes. And we're talking property taxes have gone up fifty-five percent in this county. And yet, five school districts are coming for tax increases. You guys wanted to do the safety jail center. I'm encouraging you to lower the tax rate that this county charges each and every citizen. And I looked at line after line after line of Sherry Condon's report on each department and the restricted funds. So I called Sherry and said, can the county commissioners unrestrict those funds? And she said that she thought you probably could. So I'm encouraging you guys to lower the tax rate in Antrim County and to look at some of these restricted funds and use those for either Leslie's project or the Antrim County Citizens for Common Sense proposal for the jail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very rough news until we develop. One is water. I live on St. Flurry. I've been there a year, fifty years, never had a problem the last fifteen years. It's an issue. I think it's here most of it. It hasn't been maintained like it used to when power being used. But we have no flow through the drain. And I would like to see in my thumb, but. That's one of our concerns. You gotta get slow going, sure. We got this much water. The rest is all safe. One of my concerns. Other concern is recycle. I'm on the east side of Atlanta. They come up, somebody comes up each day, picks up trash around the dumpster. If you go over the hill, you might as well just dump it down. There's so much trash on public property. It just devalues our property. And it's a business. It's just not right. I then buy other recycle places in ours. By the one on eighty-eight here, I think it's private maybe. But it's got a tall black fence around it that catches us. I think that's quite useful for what we have. Otherwise, it can go away. It's been a mess forever. We're concerned. Well, my biggest concern, water and recycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Let me clarify what Jerry Condon said. It was that only those funds that the board may have restricted, could the board have to unrestrict. We did not talk about any of those that were constitutional, any of those that were done stat. And that we need to talk finance or.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for your comments. We'll move on. The agenda, make a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second, move to second and any discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
Anyone post? Minutes, regular minutes from our April seventeenth meeting. Any corrections?
Just presented, I support.
Rooted and supported. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone post? Close session minutes. Vicki, do you have a copy of closed session minutes?
No, did not know I was supposed to.
That's. Okay, fine. Next meeting. Yep, we'll put those on the next meeting. Thank you. Liaison reports. Many reports? All right. I just wanted to say I did read North Country Community Mental Health Minister. And I appreciate you and March asking them about GTI and it seems like anyways, keeping them aware on it. I appreciate it. No old unfinished business, new business. Claims and accounts, looking for a motion to approve claims and accounts to the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and four cents. She'll move. I'll second that motion. Any questions on the bills?
Number thirty-three, fifty-nine thousand for the dam's engineering grant. Is that a full amount or are we expecting more gradually?
There's going to be a few more. I'm not sure how far along we are, but we're quite far along. I can get you a percent from it. That's fine.
Any other questions? Okay, move to second. All those favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Chairman's appointments, proposed Public Safety Center ad hoc committee. I'm looking for a motion to approve the chairman's establishment of an ad hoc committee, discuss potential steps for construction or propose public safety center and provide a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners no later than July one, twenty twenty-five. I'll make the motion. Thank you. It's been moved. There a second?
I'll second. Thank you.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay, been moved to second. All those in favor, please say, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Next, I'm looking for a motion to approve the chairman's appointment of Commissioner Terry Van Alstine, Commissioner Ray Scola, Antrim County Sheriff Kevin Hope, Finance Director Brad Rizzo, Manzalona Township Supervisor Chuck Johnson, Richard Frisky, Dale Eshenberg, and County Administrator Jeremy Scott as chair to the Public Safety Center Ad hoc Committee.
Make that motion.
Thank. Moved, moved and supported questions. Any discussion? I'd just like to, I'd just like to thank everyone, all eight members of this from volunteering or agreeing to be on this. Go ahead, Jason.
No, I just wanted to. I get a little comment. Because we passed out today what we'd like, kind of like to see you guys work on.
Okay.
Is this something I've discussed? This is probably something you guys have to discuss in your first meeting more than likely.
Yeah, that that would go to the, I'm presuming that we pass this motion, that would probably go to the chairperson.
Okay. All right, just making sure because I want to get it done. You know, a little direction because in the past, feel like we haven't had that good of direction when we do these things. So we get, it sounds like we're all on board. So anyway, that's it.
All right. I appreciate it. And again, thank you to the eight members who are willing to serve on this as you, as we all know. And I do want to point out that if you look at the residents of the membership, we are pretty well represented throughout the county with Kearney, Star, Elk Rapids, Manzalona, Banks, Helena, and Central Lake Townships represented. This committee is subject to the Open Meetings Act. It will be published when the meetings do occur. There will be meeting minutes produced, and I'm sure that the committee and the chairperson will welcome public comment and so forth at these meetings. So anyways, those are the comments I wanted to make. We do have a motion. Exactly. Anything else? Cheers.
Just kind of piggybacking on what Jason said. I think having some goals and, and some guidelines for the committee is great. And I see mentioned in this the National Institute of Corrections coming up with some planning and, and doing some numbers. I think, I think it's critical and I'm looking at this and I see a lot of background that went into it and I'm seeing a lot of thought that went into this. I don't think this was just thrown together. So I would encourage those who are on the committee to take a look at this and maybe, maybe adopt this the first, like you said, Jason, take a good look at it at the first meeting.
And my only last comment is, is July first is intentional. It is, we, I, as I've spoken with folks over the last few weeks, my intention is not to ask for volunteers to get involved in an organization or a committee that lasts forever. And, and, and July first, sixty days. I believe these are reasonable people. I believe that if there is some solution here, that these folks can come up with this within sixty days. So, Jason.
And that's one last thing. I like the timeline. Because before it would just stretched and stretched and, you know, I, I think we have a goal and a timeline to do it, and I think we can get it done.
Thanks. I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, it has been moved to second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Anyone oppose? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to appointment, strength commissioner. Is Leslie, is Leslie here?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Leslie. We do have in our packet a, a resolution, opposed resolution submitted by Leslie. It is resolution twenty-two, twenty-five dash twelve titled Antrim County Lake Levels. Again, included in our packet, so I am looking for a motion to adopt that resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt that.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Leslie. Well, Leslie, any comments you want to make before I ask the board if there's any questions?
You know, at this point, no, and I apologize. It will not let me put my picture on.
Okay.
But you have that really nice damn cat on there.
Is there any, any questions from commissioners for Leslie? Cheers.
Number six and number seven, it talks about the, the budget of it. And Leslie, I'm just wondering, it says staffing costs up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Are you? Can you elaborate a little on that? Are you, are you going to be charging hourly or as time, Jeremy? I can touch that, that with the added duties, we would be making Leslie full-time where she is a part-time regular right now. But that's the additional costs. And that's the operator of dams, right? Correct. And that comes from the operator dams fund or? It comes from the, well, it's recommended to come from the dams reserve fund. Dams reserve. And this twenty-five thousand dollars, does that include, if she's going to full-time, does that include benefits or how does that work? You already has benefits or some benefits. There's a few added benefits, but yes, it all comes out of that.
Any other, any other questions? Okay, being all the questions, I do have a motion and second, this will be a roll call, Vicki. Yes.
Commissioner Hefler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ube.
Yes.
Commissioner Scola.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Alstine.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Leslie.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
You too. Moving on. Moving on, moving on, we're a little bit early, but I know Marne is here and maybe we can, we can move right into Meadowbrook Annual Reports, Meadowbrook Medical Care Facility and Meadowview Apartments. Good morning. Good, thank you. And I should, I should point out, pardon me, I should point out again, as I've mentioned before, I'm going to ask everyone to please stick to their fifteen minutes. If there is any questions from the board, obviously we'll allow for extra time for that, but otherwise just keep us moving along.
You know it.
I know you will. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name's Marne Robertson. I'm the administrator at Meadowbrook Medical Care Facility. It's good to see everybody. So in front of you, you have our twenty twenty-four annual report. For those of you who are newer, may not be acquainted with Meadowbrook. We are Antrim County owned and operated. We have a bed capacity of one hundred and thirty-three long-term care beds. Our primary sources for patient-generated revenue are Medicaid and Medicare. We do receive the county mileage for operations, but primarily that goes to the bond payment. And we do have other state and federal support that has to do with quality measure indicators and direct care worker from the state incentives, so we can maintain and attract employees to Medicare. During our occupancy of last year, we provided thirty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine days of care. We had an occupancy of ninety-six point seven. We had a hundred and forty-four new admissions. Again, we are still dealing with the fallout of the COVID pandemic as it relates to staffing and our ability to provide care to our residents. So currently, well, in twenty twenty-four, sorry, I'm walking in two worlds. In twenty twenty-four, we had forty-four beds that were in a state-approved hold, and this was to save our reimbursement. So at the time when we wrote this, we had eighty-nine beds. I do want to tell the commissioners and the public as well. We have been slowly inching towards opening other beds, but I need to balance that with staffing and our ability to do care. So as of today, and you'll hear this again next year, but I'm going to tell you now, our census is currently a hundred and two. So we were able to open up fourteen beds, ten in another household, and then our Medicare unit, which is ten. So I'm happy about that. State survey, as you know, if you may not know, we have rigorous surveys where the state of Michigan comes in. They are CMS regulators, and they go top to bottom with everything we do. We did receive four minor citations, nothing that we resulted in substandard of care, and five minor life, life safety code. That's where the fire marshal comes in our building as well. So that's, that's an outstanding achievement on behalf of our facility and staff. Personnel, we have a hundred and twenty-four full-time people and thirty-two part-time. Our physical plant, as you will see, you know, we like to take care of the things. We want a nice facility. A lot of that is regulatory-driven, but we are focused on quality. So you will see where we. So you will see where we, um, have our facility planning projects. Uh, we do have capital expenditures. Um, and that was of seven hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Those come from our depreciation funds. Our financials, um. Our revenue, we had budgeted for twenty twenty-four, twenty million, a little over twenty one, twenty-one million dollars, excuse me. Our actual was nineteen million eight hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, and you will see our expenses, which are primarily driven in salary and fringe benefits. Uh, the other. We have bond expenses, um, increase in tech software, raw food expenses, and we do have a hybrid of contracted staff versus Meadowbrook staff. Expenses that we had budgeted was nineteen million seven hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Our actual was twenty million twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars, so we were a more than five-four percent above budget, which I think is good. Uh, we did have, um, a projected gain of one point two million dollars, this was directly when we budgeted, we budgeted for a hundred and thirteen beds, we did not make that marker. Um, so that's why, um, we had a loss of a hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, which is still very remarkable. Um, the board will see where we have designated funds. Um, we have general cash position, our total cash pos- cash position with all of our funds is sixteen million four hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Um, for the public, and I think for this board, we ask, oh, Marty, I got a lot of cash, well, it can go very quickly. Um, we keep, uh, six months of. Uh, reserves in case our payer sources, Medicaid, um, CMS, if there's any difficulties there, so we can make our payroll. Uh, if we have any emergencies, obviously, you know, we want to be able to handle that and deal with that. Uh, let's see, Meadowbrook is a five, five-star facility, uh, for those of you, it's very much like a hotel rating, except it's a little bit more rigorous. Uh, but if you go on to the CMS website, all nursing homes are rated from one to five stars, five stars is exceptional. And very good, so, uh, we maintain that, uh, we have a use of, uh, different quality measures and metrics that we have to meet and follow. Uh, let's see, we are still very active in the community, uh, we were able to have fish day this year and last year, so that was wonderful, we tag-team with Antrim County Transportation. We work with our local emergency planning, uh, Commission on Aging, Conservation District, and various other organizations. Um. I think I'll just leave it at that, if there's any questions on the Meadowbrook end.
Thank you, Marna, questions from all the chairs?
No.
Um, uh, employee turnover. We, we struggled.
Yeah.
What's, what's the driver, is it still the same as before?
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's, uh, I, I wish I had that, um. That ball, you know, we, we hire folks, and I think part of it is, um. You know, with our, with our nurses aides, um, in some of those entry-level positions, maybe they come and they realize, okay, we're gonna try it, but it doesn't work out, whether they, they don't like it, or they move, or. Or whatever, but yeah, it's still the, the same drivers.
A- and then, uh. I, I think we may have talked about it last year a little bit. Possibly retiring our debt early, um. Where are you looking at that, how's that looking right now?
Well, we talk about that, uh, with our board, um, routinely, they just haven't made that. That decision, um. Yet, but I will bring it up again.
Right now, when is it scheduled?
Twenty thirty, twenty thirty, so we're getting close. And we do part of just to let them get retirement fund, you will see with the savings when you folks refinance. So that savings that we have as a result of the decreased interest rate, we put that into our bond to. And that retirement fund, because if you remember those last few years, it's the bigger payments, so we want to do that, but I'll bring that up again.
Thanks. The questions regarding Meadowbrook?
I'll make a motion that we approve Meadowbrook's annual report.
Yeah, I'll support. Moving second, sessions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
Anyone oppose? Thank you.
Okay, as always, if anybody has any questions, you know where to find me. If you ever want to tour, if you ever want to come in, please do, okay, happy to do that.
Thank you.
Out of you. Out of your apartments. Here's the twenty twenty-four, so Meadowview Apartments is in nineteen eighty-two, just again, for the public's information, I feel like it's always good to give a little history. Um. Meadowview Apartments was established in nineteen eighty-two, when Meadowbrook went through, um, one of its evolutions, we added two, can I look at them? Okay, I know I'm supposed to be.
Thank you very much, yes, for asking.
But, um, in nineteen eighty-two, when Meadowbrook went, they added two additional wings. And Meadowview now used to be Meadowbrook, used to be our hospital, and it was three stories. And at the time, when Meadowbrook went through renovations and we added two units. They decided the commissioners and the former administrator, Mrs. Laverne Schentman, had decided that they wanted to convert those. The old Meadowbrook into twenty-one apartments that were really good old seniors, it's not moving, they do their own thing. Um, but that was the, the feeling at the time, because, you know, seniors, uh, many of them are on. A fixed income, so they wanted to, um, create that, so that's, that's where we, and so it's twenty-one single apartments, you have to be fifty-five years and older. Um, to be, uh. Applicable, uh, for that, so just, just a little bit of history of how that came to pass. We manage it on behalf of the county, because our buildings are kind of controlling as far as utilities and stuff, so. We help manage the apartments and take care of the tenants over there with their needs. So, there's that. Uh, financially. We're in pretty good shape, um. We, again, keep our revenue, uh. You know, um. I guess. Slim. Uh, because we are sensitive to the fixed incomes, however. Last year, the board had made decisions to routinely and annually. Um, keep up, so we can keep up with cost of living and expenses, um, to. Give, uh, a percentage, and the board decides that on cost of the rent, so. For a number of years during COVID, we had not done that, um, but last year, we have started annually, every January, we look at that, okay? Um, we have had a good, um, occupancy rate, uh, last year, we were at ninety-five percent occupancy, generally, we usually have, um. Good tenant, um. Uh, what's the word, I guess occupancy, um, but we usually have one or two apartments that, you know, we rotate as people, um, so they move, um. So that's why we're not at, you know, that hundred percent. Uh, we keep up with capital expenditures, the county is helping us, um, this year, we needed, um. Exterior renovation, that is happening, that is painting, uh, that will be happening, I think, next week. Uh, parking lot renovation, the elevator replacement, um, those are scheduled for twenty twenty-six, and then ceiling tile replacement in twenty twenty-seven. If you look down on page three, there's a larger capital expense. Uh, that we probably will need some assistance with, the fire alarm upgrade, there are replacement of domestic water supplies. And I'm only looking at twenty twenty-seven and, and beyond for those, and then we'll see too, obviously, um, we'd always like to cost share. If, uh, we're able to, our fund balance is not extraordinarily high, at the time of writing this, it was a little over a hundred and forty thousand. That does help us keep up with maintaining the apartments as people move out, sometimes they're severely damaged, and we have to replace carpeting and linoleum and that type of. So any questions on MVA?
Fine job, I keep a number.
Thank you.
Cheers, we, we talked last year about the elevator quite a bit.
Yes.
Where, where's that at?
Elevator is scheduled to be replaced in twenty twenty-six.
Next year.
Yes.
And, and that is on, Brad, that is on, uh, county CIP.
Yep. Make a motion that we approve Meadowview Apartments' annual report.
Yeah, I'll support. It's been moved and supported, comments, other questions from Marna? Um, and again, thank you for, uh, thank you for, um, thank you for everything you do, and Paige as well, and, and, uh. Your maintenance director, Alan, for, uh, all the work he does as well, so. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, all right, the movement second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Anyone oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
We said, Jen, you ready? All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you commissioners for having us, on behalf of my staff and the board. Uh, we just want to share a little bit about some of the exciting things that happened in twenty twenty-four, we continue. To do some great work out at Grass River, uh, I'm always proud of our team, uh, for the work that they put into this space, and as I tell people all the time in the community, I don't say it because I work there, it's a really special place, so. Hopefully today's presentation, uh, conveys some of that to you. Uh, are we, are we advancing on our own, Jeremy, do you know?
Just let me know.
Okay, go ahead, yeah, thanks, so Grass River's mission, in case you don't know, is to manage and protect the Grass River watershed. And we do that by providing opportunities for education, our conservation, and also community-wide stewardship, so that includes some of our. Uh, volunteer work that gets done, and some of the land management stuff as well. You'll note that in twenty twenty-four, we've got some big numbers. This advance here, great, uh, you'll see that our total visitation for twenty twenty-four was just over thirty-seven thousand people. And we get those numbers by a car counter that we have out on the drive coming in, so we're able to accurately reflect that. We also had some fantastic, uh, program participation this year, so about forty-four hundred people, and you can see that broken down between adults and youth. And then our visitor center, uh, we hit the ten thousand mark a couple of years ago, and we continue to slowly ratchet that up, it's not been a huge dramatic jump in the last few years, but after COVID. We definitely expanded those, and we're seeing over ten thousand people coming into the center. And then our biggest project of twenty twenty-four, as you know, uh, was replacing over two thousand feet of boardwalk, which is the next, uh. Set of slides here, after I show you a little bit about just the visitation in the center, so we're gonna flip. With our, our staff love to do graphs to look at the data, and so you can see, we have sort of a steady increase in our visitation, little bit of a dip during COVID, but that continues to grow. So, the boardwalk, let's jump in, our land and facilities. Uh, folks have been working hard to, uh, both protect the land and facilities, but also to improve them. And so, as you know, the Grass River Boardwalk, and I'll, I'll make a note for the record, I say nine feet there, and I'm not sure why, I've got, I got upside down, apparently, it's six feet wide. Our project, our phase-two project finished in twenty twenty-four, so now we have a fully ADA accessible path from the Grass River Center. To the Grass River, that it does include a six-foot wide, uh, surface, it includes a new reconstructed bridge over Finch Creek. It includes new observation platforms, a larger dock at Grass River, and maybe one of the most exciting parts from a project management's, uh, perspective, is it came in under budget. So I'm gonna show you just, uh, a few of the financials. You can see phase two and phase three, so phase two is where we ended this summer, uh, we budgeted at one point two five million, we came in at about one million sixteen thousand. And you can see what the funding for that came through, uh, I'm excited to say that this week, we will press the button to say. Goodbye to the trust fund grant, we've officially closed that out, and, uh, we're gonna move forward on that here, uh, by the end of the week. So you can see photos here of what this looks like in, in process, we have large frames that come from Whitcraft Boardwalk out of Wisconsin. They have to, the contractors have to come in and remove the nineteen eighty structure that, uh, was put in by volunteers in the mid-eighties, so they had to do the, all of that by hand. And then they actually cart those frames and the wooden panels, and you can see the bottom right there is what it looks like as it's going together. We have, uh, some new features, so the top left is the observation platform, looking onto the river out in the fen. We have a bridge over Finch Creek, you can see, we worked really hard to get that as low as possible, so that way we, our visitors could actually still experience the creek. Uh, we also have, um. That new overlook that you'll see in the top right and on the bottom left, that's looking out into Clam Lake, that's a brand-new overlook. That we did not have on the original structure, and it's something that, as we were exploring this process, we thought, what an amazing space it would be for folks to be able to see out into a new perspective, and it's been very, very popular. We also, uh, at the river, we have a new dock, we have a new entrance and exit, uh, so that we're doing programming out there, we've got nice traffic flow. We also were able to put in a accessible kayak launch at the river, and these pictures, especially the bottom right, you can see in the last few weeks, we've had a ton of flooding, as you've all heard. And Grass River Natural Area, being the wetland that it is, was able to really capture a lot of that water as it was going downstream, we actually had water, uh, standing water from Finch Creek all the way out to the river. For probably a good two weeks, and we were out there this week, it's still there, it's a lot better, but it's definitely. Um, has been a bit of a, not issue per se, but just an awareness thing. We were able to save some money by using some of our volunteers, top left, uh, and then the third picture from the left, we actually did some, uh, maintain, maintenance on the current boardwalks. The guys on the left were actually clearing the trail for the new overlook, and then that caution tape one, uh, we did re-manually remove that old overlook, so for phase three, we'll save some dollars there. Our crews came in and painted the building, so you can see they're working on the structure up by the pavilion at the Grass River Center. We freshened that up, and then obviously, with our snowfall this year, we spent a lot of time on the trail, uh, monitoring and, and grooming those cross-country ski trails. We also were able to expand a little bit in twenty twenty-four, so thanks to the Wilson Family Foundation, uh, those, uh, folks came together. Daisy Wilson, some of you may know, was a hundred and seven, she passed away during COVID. And she always wanted Grass River to have the ten acres that are, that is on, uh, on Lake Bel Air, on the northeast corner there. Of their land, and so we worked for a couple of years with the family, and in June of last year, we were able to sign the paperwork, so. They did donate specifically to Grass River, and so, uh, we'll, I'll show you the parcel map in just a minute, but there are about sixty-five total parcels, and a handful of those are Grass River Inc. The rest of them are all owned by Antrim County. So we also continued with education. We're gonna. Show you a little bit, not a lot of changes this year, but we saw over nine hundred students who came out during the entire, uh, spring, summer, fall, winter even, you can see, we used our snowshoes this year. Maybe the first time in two or three years, uh, maple sugaring continued, and then we do, we do a lot of stream monitoring, stream testing with the kids, and there's a nice quote there that you can take a look at later. Summer camp continues to expand, last year was the first year, we sold out summer camp spots in just a few hours, it's become, uh, we actually broke PayPal for a minute. Uh, so we had eighty-two campers, which is a rise from sixty in twenty twenty-three. And, uh, those kids came out, and in total, we had nineteen hundred contact hours with kids in nature, so that happened again this year, we sold out very quickly, and we're excited to continue. Our general public programs continue, people love nighttime hikes, so we do snowshoe and lantern lit skis, we do lighting of the bridges in the wintertime. You can see, we did some cross-country ski programming, and then also some community groups came out and joined us as well, and you can see, we had a dip during COVID, but we are, again, slowly starting to ratchet back up those public programs. Conservation is a big step, so we are always working on ways to protect and preserve this beautiful land that we manage. So the parcel map includes the sixty-five parcels that I mentioned, and you can see, we, we, uh, preserve those by monitoring, so we're out on them pretty regularly, either just checking, looking for man-made structures, notable species. But also, we do a lot of actual monitoring, so infernal pool monitoring is happening, stream monitoring, fen monitoring, we do a butterfly monitor. Uh, and all of that happens both internally, but also with our volunteers and with local partners. I've mentioned to you multiple times, the Grass River Adaptive Management Plan, that continues. We are working on, uh, we, we removed a bunch of old no-wake signs in the river in the past year, we are working on a permit with Eagle. To put up to four new, to try to reduce some of the speed issues that we're seeing on Grass River. We are looking at ways to monitor the bank access, we've got a lot of people banking on the river now, which is causing some issues. Uh, not to mention their safety being one of the big ones. And then this summer, we've gotten a grant through the Doyle Family Foundation to hire a few interns to be on the river and in the community, educating people on why we're asking for these particular, uh, actions to happen. We continue to do research, so we had some total research, we, this year are working with John Balzoo coming in to do some research at the end of, uh, June, I believe it is. We had a, a gentleman from University of Michigan come out and do a two-day training on sedges and wetlands. And that actually drew in a lot of landscape architects and professionals in the area, as well as, uh, partner organizations to learn about the importance of protecting these spaces. I mentioned in the past, the natural playground, that continues to progress, uh, we just did an interview yesterday with Forefront Family, or Forefront Foundation. Uh, they did a video on it, they gave us a nice grant at the end of, uh, last year, that we are going to be using towards it, and we're hoping to make some progress on that in twenty twenty-five. Financially, uh, you can see our partners, you, you can, you know, kind of the same, same folks we've worked with in the past, but we continue to be very great. but we continue to be very grateful for the work that we can do together to make this community a better place. Financially, we're doing great. Uh, the numbers are small, but you can take a look at them in your packet. Uh, we did, uh, more than break even this past year. You can see the numbers on revenue looked high. We did take an in-kind donation for that land of nine hundred and twelve thousand. So that looks a little bit skewed in the numbers, but that's the reason. And I also want to note, if we go to the next slide, the county appropriations are a solid nine percent. We're always at around nine to eleven percent. And I just want to thank you. I say this every year, but it's true. I talk with my community or my colleagues around the country. And you know, public-private partnerships are not easy. And I really believe that this organization and the commissioners and the county have really grown over the last fifty-five, six, fifty-six years now to uh have an uh relationship that really does work well together. So thank you for helping to renegotiate the contract last year. That's been wonderful. Uh, and again, our board of directors and our staff, we really appreciate everything that you all do. You can see our board, our current board, and then I gave you some current staff. So if you see us in the community, you'll know who we are. And then I'll just end with a vision. I believe it's on the next phrase. So you know, we strive always to serve as a regional leader for ecological conservation. And as we go through strategic planning and all the work we do, you know, we really work hard to be that face, to be the organization that people call when they have some nature question that they want to know more about. And we see that happen day in and day out. And then I always end with a nice cute video. So we have a new population of beavers on the property. So I want to show you, we did some trail cam work recently. If we can get it to work, you'll see. I've always wondered like what it really looks like to see beavers uh active at night. No, you're not gonna, I'm gonna say, I'll send it to you. It's been pretty fantastic to watch. That little log that he's like sitting on, he pulls that across. At one point, he pushes it into the bank. So anyway, we're watching them closely. We also know that that could be, beavers can be a problem. Currently, they are not where they're located, but we are fully aware that we are gonna keep our eyes on that and we're gonna hopefully use it as an educational opportunity. So. With that, any questions?
Guys, do a great job, Jen. That, that uh board is a hundred percent on board with the keeping that pristine and I'm looking forward to seeing what you do with the Wilson property.
Yeah, me too. I do want to say May twenty-third, you'll all get postcards next week, but we are doing a ribbon cutting on phase two of the boardwalk. It's Friday, May twenty-third at one P M. It'll be at the center. The postcards are being printed and hopefully we'll get mailed out on Monday. But obviously you'll all get one. You know, we hope we can get some commissioners and some community, obviously, and then the, the county as well.
Well, um, I'll make a motion that we accept Grass River's natural, uh, natural areas annual report.
Been moved in second. My comments again, Jen, as I've made before, thank you very much. I mean, thank you, um, um, really a shiny example. If, if no one's ever read the book about how this was created, um, it's a, it's a great read um, in terms of uh prior board of commissioners, uh, um, and Jen talks about public-private partnerships. This is, um, I think, uh, the best example I've ever seen.
Really is.
Um, of this. So thank you so much. My only comment, I know the sheriff is here, and I'm not looking for a comment from the sheriff today. But, but, uh, but I know Jen, last year we talked about this traffic, the speeds, uh, the boat speeds.
Yep.
Um, and I hope you know, I think Kevin said last year, again, the sheriff is there to partner with you.
Actually, we've been communicating in the last couple of weeks. So we have a new conservation director who's reached out as well, and the three of us are gonna definitely sit down and talk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Appreciate it. Anything else?
Uh, the car counter, it's probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred of those are my wife that comes. And uh, and walks all, all the seasons. So she loves it out there.
Well, and we love her photos. So yeah.
I know, yes. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Very proud of that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, been moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
Anyone opposed? Oh, yeah. Thanks. Thank you very much, Jen.
Good morning, Dina. How are you?
I'm fine. Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Morning, Dina.
Morning. I am honored to be here. Thank you guys for the invitation to talk about our annual report. Uh, for those who don't know me, I'm Dina Jerdy. I'm the executive director of Paddle Antrim. Um, Antrim County has been a part of Paddle Antrim since its beginning. For those who didn't know, um, they were part of creating it ten years ago. And this is, I think, bigger than anybody originally imagined it becoming. Um, and I'm really excited to be a part of it. Um, we are a local nonprofit. Um, our mission is to protect our waterways by connecting people through paddle sports. Um, we're served by a volunteer board of six um volunteer members, as well as two part-time staff equaling about um one full FTE. We work to protect our waterways, and we know that the work we do improves production of our water resources. We support an economic vitality in the work we do and improve the physical and wellness of the people who, who join us. Um, we are generally funded through operations, through um private donations and grants, and then through grants when we do capital campaigns as well. So I'm gonna run through our work, kind of through our strategic plan. And we recently updated our strategic plan at the end of the year. Um, and I just kind of want to talk about the work that we're doing based on that. So our first priority is to support and increase paddlers by enjoying our waterways. We do that by hosting the water trail, um, premier paddling experiences for people and promoting on water safety. The water trail opened in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, there are eighty-four access sites along this water trail, providing over one hundred miles for people to explore. We are only able to do this with the help of the twenty partners um that helped create this. As the uh access, we don't own any of the access sites, so we depend on all of those twenty access site owners to create the water trail with us. We're grateful to the county to be one of those and provide Notware's Landing and um Willow Day Park as two of the access sites on the water trail. On those two access sites, we haven't had any issues with. Um, we're grateful for that. We continue to work with you and partner with you on that. And hope that if there are any improvements you want to do in the future, we'll be a part of that. Um, two weeks ago, we were honored to receive the designation as a Pure Michigan Trail. Um, we're honored to be one of eleven trails in the entire state to be a Pure Michigan Trail. We are the first water trail to receive that designation, and we're really honored by that. What that means is we are doing a good job. We are one of the best in the state in promoting our resources, having the access available and providing quality experiences. We couldn't do that without our partners and our volunteers and our donors. So we're grateful for that and know that it's a collaborative effort of all of us together to make this happen. The water trail is part of the outdoor industry. The outdoor industry is a big part of the Michigan economy, and we recognize that we are a part of that. Um, we don't have trail counters like Jen has, so we can't tell you how many people get on the water trail with eighty-four access sites and people getting on at their houses. We just can't give you that kind of data. But I can tell you, since we launched the water trail ten years ago, we've had ninety thousand users, individual users come to our website. So we know people are looking for water trail data um on our website, and that's where the majority of it is. We have distributed over twenty-five hundred water trail maps to people. They're digital and waterproof. And we have invested over one point three million dollars into the water trail, thanks to our partners and our funders and our, and so we're grateful for the water trail, and we're grateful to have the peak community around us to help us continue to improve the water trail. We do our part in trying to market it and provide information to people through our website and through information. So people know the water trail exists. In two thousand and twenty-four, we spent time working with our site owners, with paddlers, with local businesses to look at the water trail. We did a water trail plan when we started in two thousand and eighteen and decided it was time to revise it now that there was infrastructure in the ground. And so we reached out, we did surveys of the people, and some of the things is what we heard from people is that they want to see more enhanced infrastructure. They want to see more accessible features. People want to see more bathrooms in certain routes, definitely. Um, and they also want to see improved signage in areas and continued stewardship. So things like boat wash stations, um native shorelines, things like that, people want to see as part of the water trail. We also heard from paddlers that they really want stronger connections with the community. So when people come to paddle, they want to be able to go into a community, drop their kayak, maybe at a kayak rack, walk into town, go get some ice cream or some dinner and be able to do that. They also want to have connections to other amenities, whether it's swimming beaches, biking, things like that. So people are really looking for us to provide more of that connectivity information to them. We know it exists, but they're looking for that from us as well. One of the things that we're working on now, and we have been as part of the improvement, is Rotary Park. So we were working with the village of Elk Rapids, and we raised over a million dollars to help them improve Rotary Park. This is our biggest capital improvement on the water trail to date. Um, it includes um over, um, I guess, next slide. It includes accessibility for all. So there is a universal kayak rack as part of this. There is accessibility through benches, restrooms, things like that. So accessibility is throughout the project. The other um key component for us when we do access sites is environmental stewardship. We want to make sure that we're doing our part to protect our waterways in the future. So this includes the first non-motorized permanent wash station, so people can clean and drain dry their boats before they go in and, and working on that as well as um putting in native plants as well. In addition to the work that we are doing, there are other partners that are doing great water trail work, and I want to recognize that. First Gen and Grass River for putting in the third universal access site kayak launch on the water trail. We're grateful for your partnership and your commitment to the water trail as well. Um, Sixth Mile St. Clair has done some improvements, as well as Torch River Bridge includes a separation of motorized and non-motorized launches. And we're really grateful for that as well. Paddle Antrim continues to focus on, on water safety and, and paddling experiences. So over the nine paddling seasons that we've had, we've had twenty-seven hundred people on the water that we've done. Whether it's through community paddles, our festival, um paddling classes, we get people out on the water engaging. We're really excited this coming year to pilot some new programs. As I mentioned, last year, we received some equipment. We did uh some work last year with elsewhere students to get them out on the water. And we're looking to pilot some more ways to engage people on the water this year, and we're really excited about that. Um, another priority for us is protecting the water that we love. We can only do so much, and so we depend on working with our partners to do certain things. We focus on invasive species um and educating people about um moons and moon awareness. But we also use a portion of our earned income to do some mini grants to pro- partners that whose projects align with the work that we do. Recently, we've done um Grass River. They're doing a native um garden display as part of our work, as well as working, we've done some stewardship work with the Watershed Center on some shoreline work and road salt monitoring and also providing a little bit of funding for the Golden Brown algae on Torch Lake as well. We also prioritize connecting people to our work. We cannot do what we do without our partners. As I mentioned, we're a staff of about one person, and we do a lot of work. So it depends on our partnerships like um with the county and the other site owners, our volunteers and our donors. We are grateful for those folks, and we couldn't do what we do without all of them. Um, our priority is to ensure financial stability. I didn't put our graphs in there, um, but they are in the report. Um, we are ensuring that we are financially stability and making sure we're having reserves so we can meet the needs of and keep continuing our work going into the future. Um, and we can't do that without adequate staff and our board, and we're grateful for um, myself, I, our other employee and the volunteer board that helps us do the work that we do and guide the work that we're doing. With that, we are grateful for your support. And I am open to any questions that you have about what's in your packet or what I talked about.
Thanks, Steve. Questions? Questions?
I see a lot of kayaks go by by helps.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I second that. All right, moved to second to accept Dina's report for the Paddle Antrim. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Uh, anyone opposed? Thank you. Have a great summer.
Thanks, Steve.
Paul is with us. Hello, Paul, the commissioner.
Thank you for having us. I want to start out by saying, as you all know, I'm rather new to Antrim County, and I'm just totally amazed of how this county appears for our seniors. I have seen just beautiful things, and our mission, as you all know, is really to help provide the highest level of support to seniors who need it to be able to stay as independent as possible. And I really do think we do that here. So it really is my privilege to talk to you about all the accomplishments the team and the volunteers and the board did last year. I was not here. So this is their work and the investment of um all of you, really. Our um key accomplishments. I think you know that the goal was to expand access to our services, to the um home delivered, to the congregate, to the personal care and to home chore services. And you will have seen, as you read the report, that we did in fact accomplish that. Manasuna was an area of focus to try to um rebuild the congregate nail site there. And they did excellent at um recruiting staff as well as increasing participants. In home services, one of the challenges, as you had heard from the Metalwork um presentation, has done the recruitment and the retention of staff. This board, to my understanding, supported um the team in trying to make changes to be able to recruit and retain staff. And I think they actually were successful in doing it. In fact, in the short time I've been here, um, which has been since January, we've actually replaced, um, well, yeah, well, how can I say it? We, we placed three positions that had been unfulfilled for a while, and that was really by the support of, of the commissioners as well as the um whole Antrim County residents. We were able to start a really excellent program. It's called Virtual Connections. And it is an educational program. We first began it in the homes of seniors, homebound seniors. Try to teach them how to use their smartphones to be able to um learn how to do virtual medical visits so that they wouldn't have to leave their own homes to go see a doctor and travel and find a ride and all of those kinds of things. But it was so popular with those um in-home seniors. It was started a congregate program, which really is going on as we speak. So it's really this year's um efforts that I'm just truly amazed at the difference in hearing from the participants about what they're learning and how they're gonna be able to use that technology. So when they get to be homebound and isolated, I think it's just truly a amazing program. And that's in partnership with Michigan State, who have fund um, grant that we got. We were able to um secure a new home-delivered truck this year for our route. Um, we are actually hoping we can add a route at some point, if we can recruit some volunteers to help us with that. But uh, together with the new truck that we just purchased, again, with the support of this county and then also being able to fix some of our other trucks that had been out of commission for a while, thanks to Terry and the Louisiana Transmission. Um, we're well positioned to continue to bring food to our homebound seniors. And um, when I'm talking about last year's report, I would say the, this program is incredibly valuable. As you know, we had terrible ice storms not too long ago, and this program not only brought meals to people, they were able to, the volunteers, check on the people to make sure that they were okay. And uh, that um really was amazing to watch because the volunteers would come back and say, well, this person needs that, this person needs that. So it's bigger than bringing food. It's checking isolated people, and so thank you for that. And then we continue to share um the services. I know the team from last year, um, on the recommendation of the board of commissioners, they go out to a lot of the different townships to share what the programs were about. And Amy has shared with me that that seemed to be very valuable. A lot of people really didn't know what we were doing for seniors, and um this county does a lot for seniors. So I think everybody should really feel good about the tremendous work that's been done um, last year, years preceding. This year, we're into our fiftieth year, so this work has been going on um in building, and there's been a strong commitment for a long time in this county. But looking ahead, we want to continue to provide access to in-home programs again. We want to keep our seniors residing in our community, supporting them as much as we can. We want to do it as effectively and as efficiently as we can do. We're going to continue our virtual connections training. I, I think that's going to help a lot of people, not just now, but into the future. We are beginning the work on the About Day program. You'll hear a little bit more about that. I think it's the next agenda item, but basically that's a program that would be an effective way and efficient way to be able to help many people with, um, their similar needs, like in a, in a common space, in a private space, but also some respite for caregivers who really are trying to help their loved ones stay at home, but sometimes they need a break. So our hope is that we can get this program going. We desperately need volunteers for our home-delivered program, so I put that out to anyone who is so inclined to give us a few hours. That would be great. We do a lot of education that has been identified that a lot of our, um, caregivers, people helping their parents at home need support. They need to understand, um, the course of disease, whether it's dementia, Alzheimer's, or even some chronic disease, and how to best help people live optimally independent. But also, um, getting some supports. We're going to do some education in that. We have heard from our seniors, they'd like more, um, opportunities for what we call the Dining Out Program. So that's a program where, um, seniors purchase vouchers and then they can go to, um, a restaurant potentially to get a, a good meal. We're trying to get some access points outside of the lair. Uh, right now, our only access for that is, um, a Boston, B C Pizza is what it's called, yes. But we're also trying to find other locations further out into our county for access. And I mentioned to you that it's our Jubilee Year. I like to call the fiftieth anniversary a Jubilee, and so we want to celebrate that. Uh, we want to celebrate this county for all the great things that they've done for the last fifty years for the senior population. We want to celebrate with our seniors, um, many of whom were quite young yet when it first began. I haven't found anyone yet that's old enough to remember really, but, uh, we are going to celebrate. Okay. There we go. I have a long list of services and activities that are provided to seniors sixty and over. I'm not going to read them all to you, but I will highlight that the congregate sites, they offer so many, um, activities for our seniors. And by far, birthday dinner celebrations, bingo, and we, it's really great to hear people enjoying those activities in the class. In terms of other support services, we just finished the tax season. So many people came into the, um, center to get help with taxes. I think some of you know there's been a lot of remodeling going on interiorly with furnishings, um, at the Commission on Aging. Things that got a little bit tired inside of there, but it had been spruced up in the last year. Some people came in, they go, are we in the right place? It's really, really nice. So, so, um, it's a really nice environment. But also in Manasalona, there's, um, we've been working with the village there and a lot of nice changes to that setting. And, um, Elk Rapids is working on some changes with the expansion of the church. So, so our, um, centers are really quite nice and they offer a lot of activities, including trips. Um, snow. Big service for our community, uh, of course, more in the beginning of this year than at the end of last year. But December was a busy season for us too, and if you remember, there was a, um, your first time you closed the county, I think. So, uh, a lot of people worked hard in trying to keep our seniors, um, not snowed in. So those would be some of our services. We do have really good participation from our whole county. Uh, you can see the, the graph of which of the townships receive some of the in-home services and the home-delivered meals, but we really do reach the full county. And as it relates to the number of clients that have participated in our congregate meals, nine hundred and sixty-five individuals come to the various centers. That's a lot of people. And again, they're from, um, all throughout our county. The number of meals served, um, continues to, um, increase for the congregate. And I, I mentioned to you in particular in Manasalona. In, um, home delivery, you see the number of meals served on the very next page, it decreased a little bit. On the very next page, you're going to see that we reached, um, more clients. So why would that be? It might be some people only want to have the meals three times a week as opposed to five, that type of thing. Like to highlight, um, on the right, our staff at Manasalona, they did a great job with, um, getting things going over there. I also, um, just need to decide whether I want to also say, for those that don't know, the Manasalona site served as a warming center during the, um, ice storm. And so how wonderful it is that we could collaborate with the village and provide hospitality and food and warmth and support to people who had lost all their power. In terms of, um, clients served, you can see that we've increased that, share a very new truck. Again, in-home services, these would be, um, personal care, like bathing or helping dress, uh, dressing, queuing, respite care, or maybe it's, um, cleaning, that type of thing. You can see how many more individuals we have served. Mention volunteers?
I'll ge- I'll give you a two-minute warning there, Paula.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Um, volunteers, we can't do this without them. So thanks to all of our volunteers. I spoke about the snow. Our revenues, lots of sources of funds, um, by large, the green is Antrim County, the village. The other areas, we, we do do a sliding fee scale. We do get some grants from some of, uh, trip, area, triple A area and aging, some other areas, but I won't go through them all. Expenditures, our largest ones are in the congregate and home-delivered meals. We do, um, charge a, um, sliding fee scale for the in-home services. We ask for donations for our congregate of four dollars and, um, eight dollars for under age sixty. Our Board of, um, Advisors, thank you to all of them. They've helped me with the transition. And our staff, the group that have done all of this together with the volunteers and the Board of Advisors. And these individuals are amazing. I hear them answer the phone and the caring and the compassion and the passion they have for the people that they work with is beautiful.
That would be it. I have no left.
Questions, uh, board questions for, uh, for Bob.
Good job. Paula, you're doing a great job with coming along with the, uh, the new position and making headway. And everybody that I've talked to, both employees and, uh, people that go there have all been all positive and absolutely wonderful with you.
Thank you. Really happy to be here.
No, thank you for, thank you for everything. Maggot a, uh, motion to, uh, accept Paula's interim report, please.
So moved.
Been moved to second. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Uh, and moving on, uh, with our agenda here, um, again, the House Commission on Aging, uh, we do, uh, have a submission, uh, from Mitch Bart, Maintenance Director. I'm looking for a motion to authorize the release of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars with a bid from Summer Solutions for the demolition of the residential home and garage at three-ten East Caillouga, and authorize the board chair to sign a contract for this service.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, second, but then moved to second it, uh, questions? Or I know Mitch is here. Questions for Mitch? Questions for Paula? Questions for Jeremy? Any?
Came in last, so.
Okay, uh, been moved and, uh, moved to second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
You want to post? You. Uh, moving now to another actual request, uh, from Paula, uh, Director of COA. Looking for a motion to authorize the release of twenty-five thousand dollars as budget for progressive A and E proposal to provide conceptual planning for a potential four thousand square foot addition to the current COA facility and authorize the chair to sign an agreement for these services.
Well, make the motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moved and seconded, uh, questions for, uh, Paula, questions for Jeremy?
Right, Jeremy? Jeremy, this, uh, this proposal, can you outline for me just a little bit? It would be a current add-on to the building that we have right across the road here, is that?
Yes.
And how much bigger is it gonna, would that make it?
We don't have a definitive, but about a four thousand square feet bigger, which even to continue our current services, we are going to need, whether we do any other additional, you could see from Paula's report, we have a lot more seniors and they are participating more.
How, how big is our current, you know, roughly? Is it going to double in size or?
No.
I, I have no idea how, what square footage.
If I had to put a number to it, maybe thirty percent bigger.
So almost half again.
Okay, only because, and thank you, Mitch, only because he wasn't at the microphone. So Mitch Bart indicated sixty-five hundred square foot current building. Good. Any other questions? Okay, then moved and seconded, uh, all of the favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Now, moving on, emergency management, uh, uh, our emergency manager, looking for a motion to authorize the chair to sign a temporary land use agreement between Antrim County and the Michigan Army National Guard as proposed.
Sure. I'll support.
Kind of moved and supported. Questions? Comments? All of them, done. All of the favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
Yes, anyone opposed? Thank you. Uh, moving now to, uh, Networks Northwest, uh, who's providing assistance to the county, um, in regards to our materials management planning. Looking for a motion to approve the Antrim County Materials Management Planning Committee bylaws.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll support.
Thank you. Moving second, questions? Do you have no questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
Yes, anyone opposed? Thank you, um, same, also Networks Northwest, looking for a motion to approve the Antrim County Materials Management Plan War Program for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five.
Sure.
Thank you, support. Uh, moved and supported. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
Yes, and post?
I will, um, if I can make it quick, I mean, it was nothing to do with that, but, um, we did have a materials management plan meeting last week, and things looked like they're going along really well. Matthew's been doing a good job of trying to get this thing off the ground, and we actually had a really good turnout, so things are, um, steaming along with that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see. Uh, moving on, uh, now, uh, your memorandum in front of you from Stephanie Murray, H R Director, um, uh, well, I'm gonna. Well, there is a proposed motion. If anyone feels necessary for us to go into closed session and discuss further, um, if there isn't, I'm looking for a motion to ratify the bargaining unit agreement between Antrim County and the Fraternal Order of Police, representing the Antrim County Sheriff's Command Union employees for three years, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, and twenty-twenty-seven. The chairman be authorized to execute the agreement. The finance director be authorized to make the appropriate budget amendments with the funding to come from general fund contingencies.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jason. Then, is there a second? Also, Ray, thank you very much. Moved to second. Any questions? Comments? Okay, all of the favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
Yes, anyone opposed? Thank you. Uh, county administrators report. Questions for Jeremy? No questions for Jeremy?
Number four, the Consolidated Parts. Any, uh, further update for the legislature or not?
Um, no. I mean, the short answer is no. We have been working on, uh, updating our exploratory review, uh, working with the judge, working with the, um, board administrator, and, and, um, we have just sent that off actually this morning to them as a reminder that everybody's on board with this, and, uh, this is our plan.
Well, I just, I just, I just commend you for all the work on this and, uh, for the possibility in the near future of, uh, Antrim County Court serve our citizens better.
Thanks, Justin. Anything else for Jeremy? Uh, anything for, uh, or Brad?
Um, I was written, uh, another reminder, uh, CPE meeting, nine twenty-eighth of June, um, and yeah, that's what I got.
Any questions, Brad? Okay, no question, Brad. No report from me. Uh, Kevin, any comments you want to make today? It was nice of you to get so dressed up for us.
Yeah.
I guess I'm flattered. So, uh, I just wanted to let everyone know that we're going to have an exercise on June first. This details with the National Guard, so it's going to freak out, I mean, oh sure. Um, we're partnering with, uh, the National Guard, the Army National Guards, uh, in our law enforcement partners as well. So if you want to come by and you want to be an actor, please come on. We'd be happy to accommodate you. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna basically have our officers, um, get a training in reference to, um, protesters. And, uh, we want some of our officers.
June first?
June first, yes. And, uh, we want our officers to never been subjected, that's be able to know what it's going to be like, know how it can be unruly, or it can be very peaceful. So just so you have an idea on that, so June first, it's going to be eight through about two o'clock. So if you see a lot of some of the helicopters coming in, it's just for that. That's all it is. So it's nothing to be alarmed. So. Any questions from the board on that? Yeah. You sent me an email, uh, during reference to, uh, some of our, uh, stuff that we send out to, uh, that come in and help our inmates. Um, we don't send anybody out of our jail unless it's a medical emergency. They all come to us. They come in and reference to, uh, the pastor, um, we have AA meetings, we have Catholic services that come in. Um, we, it's just not a good thing to have our inmates go out to this. Um, as, as you noted, reference to transporting us money, so bring them in. It's a safe decision. Unless it's medical emergency, uh, and they need to go to the hospital, they go buy ambulance. If it's an appointment for a doctor, do accommodate that. We don't send them by ambulance because that's extremely expensive. So we will have definitely have to take that. I hope, hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, I think, uh, I was asked some about the opioid money and, but that's different. I, I'm kind of understanding now that that.
Yes.
People that are seeking help with opioids may not be guilty of any crimes, so they wouldn't be in our jail. So transporting them to a house or a home where they can receive help would not be under your jurisdiction, so to speak.
For that, I mean, that, that's where all the, uh, I heard somebody up there earlier to talk about stepping up program. Uh, it's, it's becoming very huge for us, and that's, um, stepping up program, it has nothing to do with the opioids. But, uh, it basically showing people, hey, there's another life besides being in jail custody. Trying to get people that if they're committing a crime, obviously, it's, it's the first thing they're going to deal with. But to get them help and or show them the way that they, there, there's another life. And, uh, when they leave our facility, you know, if they're in there for drugs or whatever, we make sure they have an appointment with their counselor before they leave. They have an appointment, they need to see a doctor. We have all that set, ready to go. We can get an air kill in, in their bag, so. Little package of a sudden.
I haven't heard a lot recently, uh, the mental health board regarding stepping up. Are we still? Are we still making headway or, I I was asked where we're at, I mean, we've been talking about this for four years, so
we have already got our committee together and we have uh, which is, myself, J A and and uh sergeants. We're we're out of our way, I mean, we we've already done a few of the stepping up programs. Um we had an individual that came in, you know, that we were able to get him out of there due to medical reasons or whatnot, and that's something that we need to uh make sure the laptop of, so and that's where a jail nurse come in. She does all her assessments, which here everybody is, is where they're supposed to be at. I just want to make one quick notification, um our K nine minute, um you know, we're gonna get another dog. And that money did not come from any citizens, uh the board didn't approve any monies or anything like that. So thirty thousand dollars uh was donated, grants, donations. Um so in in saying that, within the last three to four months, uh the revenue that we brought in, just so the board is aware, eighty-two thousand dollars that we have brought in. So, we're trying to do our part, so we're trying to bring some of this revenue in to move to the county. So obviously, this is fingerprinting, this is P V Ts, zero tolerance. The list goes on, I'd be here all day, I give you every one of the uh uh paper service photocopies, uh the home P V T machines that are zero tolerance. List goes on, so I do have my undersheriff, he is uh, he's actually directed to, he is working out getting grants. Certain projects that we want to do, um can't get grants on everything, so there's times that we do need to come to the board and ask for assistance. Some of those uh, those projects that we need are pretty big. Um some of the projects that we have, like like body cameras, so I came here a few months ago, told you we were looking at some grants. Um I looked into it and I got denied on one grant, I'm not gonna stop, I'll keep pushing forward. Um so we do have tasers coming up, we're gonna look at that as well, a lot of people will not get grants, ultraguns, tasers, pepper spray. They're very, very specific on that, give us your grant money. Just so you have an idea, we do have to come to the board for the body cameras, we will get reversed half of that money from that not hard on a grant. And believe the county administrator has something with reference to Tigs and Cellmate, uh that's all reported, Mr. Scott, um Cellmate was our vendor for our jail food. Tigs has bought them out and nothing is gonna change, uh not to cops, nothing, even our employee uh tip. It's gonna stay there as well. Because Texas is unheard of, I'll keep it for you, so with the company. But they are gonna honor our contracts that we had with uh something, just so forward to that. Soon as we uh get all the contract information, I'll get that to Mr. Scott. Appreciate you guys.
Thanks, Captain. Uh there's matters, Jason, any last comments, Terry?
No. Yes, yeah, I do have something, um I attended uh Jordan Township's meeting, um seven days, I move this Monday. Anyways, um uh I was made aware that our uh our our emergency manager, Matthew Adamac, this came from uh Jim from the Ambulance Authority. Uh when we had the ice storm, the power outage, uh Jim, uh there was a resident in Jordan Township who was on a ventilator and was without power. And uh Jim made a call to Matthew Adamac. And Matthew was able to secure a generator for this resident within twenty minutes. Um which was just amazing, so I reached out, I actually texted um Matthew to thank him for that, and uh I just think that we're very, very fortunate to have uh Matthew as our emergency manager in Antrim County. So.
Thanks. What? Yeah, you said Jordan Township, what happened at the meeting?
Oh, yeah, I guess I probably should bring that up too. So the uh uh the county, or I'm sorry, the uh township uh treasurer, uh she issued her resignation, had a resignation letter at her, at the last meeting. And then the uh the clerk uh resigned also. So at this point, um they're gonna need a treasurer and a uh and a clerk. So yeah.
All right, all right, thanks, Rick.
Yep.
All right, Jess, any else, nothing else for me, uh left public comment, any more public comment uh this morning, Richard?
Again, I'm prompted to make this brief comment. When I heard from the Meadowbrook people and the Christian on Aging, uh I'd like to pay a quick tribute to my mother who passed away last evening in Meadowbrook. At ninety-three years old, she spent two-thirds of her life as a German immigrant in this county, and I think she made a big impact on this county. But I'd like to particularly thank the folks of those facilities and those uh offices for their contribution, uh she was cared for in her home where Commission on Aging was a factor for over thirteen years by my older sister. When it became just too difficult, only two weeks ago, she moved to Meadowbrook and she only lasted two weeks there, which really surprised us all. But they were wonderful to her to the very end, so I'd like to thank all of you for what you do to make that a first-class, so when again it was a big help and blessing to our now. Thank you.
Any other last comments today? Thank you again all for joining us, um we're adjourned.
Thank you. Good job there, bud.